We're just gonna wait for a couple minutes for Juan Carrillo to get here.
Green saver, bro.
Yeah, let me go.
Now watch out for each other.
Uh, yeah, I forgot that, um, we're doing closed session first. I'm actually trying to get their packets completed before they leave. We're trying to get their joint packets ready before... Before they go. Okay, it's about 6:03 and we're gonna go ahead and call to order the 6:00 PM closed, uh, session, special meeting. If we could get a roll call, that would be great. Mayor Paul Timbannoncourt? Here. Councilmember Caddiel?
Here.
Councilmember Loa?
Here.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
And I'll make a motion to excuse, uh, Mayor Hoffbauer as he is still unavailable right now.
Is he coming back?
Well, we'll check.
Good, good. Um, do we have any public comments? Public comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, then I guess, uh, city attorney.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only items to be discussed in closed session are those which are listed on the agenda.
Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and step into the back. Okay.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and have the city attorney discuss the items that we. In closed session?
Thank you, Your Honor. As item 4.1, anticipated litigation, number of cases, one, the council gave unanimous direction to staff. With Councilmember Hoffbauer absent, there's no further portable action on that item at this time. As item 4.2, labor negotiations, council gave unanimous direction to labor negotiators with Councilmember Hoffbauer absent. There's no further portable action on that item at this time, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Your Honor.
And we're gonna go ahead and call to order a 7:00 PM council meeting. If we could do a pledge of allegiance, anybody want to do the pledge?
I'll do it.
Okay, Juan.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart, please, with your after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, united in its whole liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if we could get a roll call, that would be wonderful. It's kind of like deja vu, isn't it? Can we just do this?
Mayor Pro Timbannon Court.
Here.
Councilmember Caddiel.
Here.
Councilmember Loa.
Here.
And Councilmember Bishop.
We have a call. Wanting to excuse the mayor? Mayor Hoffbauer?
I'll carry it.
I'll make a second, if you made a motion, I'll make a second.
Okay. All right. Presentations, JJ.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My honor here today, stand up, I cannot believe that.
The city clerk's office was able to put this first on the agenda tonight, I don't know how that happened. They set the agenda, and here we go. And, you know, I'm so glad that our clerk employees are here, so that they can accept this, and. You know, we are truly blessed with great representation from the clerk's office, so. It'll be my honor to read this proclaiming Municipal Clerks Week, May 2nd through the 8th, 2021. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of municipal clerks provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, bringing equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, Stephen D. Hoffbauer, mayor of the city of Pondell, on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Shanae Smith, and to all municipal clerks for their vital service as they perform their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Shanae and staff, will you guys come up here, and council, you want to come down? They, they work for all of us, so why don't you come down for this picture?
And you know what the public needs to know too, you guys, is that this is not an easy position for them to be in. They have to know local law, state law, county law. There are so many things that they have to keep up on at all times. It's an incredible task that they do, plus helping every one of us at every election, anybody who wants to run, questions about voting and running for office. These ladies are the ones that help make that a seamless and smooth process. And without them, we would be sunk. So I really appreciate all that you guys do, so thank you so very much.
And, and they know I'm big fans, council may not know this, but I'm probably standing here today because I took an internship in 1989 in the city clerk's office in Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. And I fell in love with local government because of employees like these four. So I'd be honored to jump in the picture with council.
Yeah.
Do you want to say something?
I do. I just actually wanted to dedicate this to the women who run the department, which are these ladies right here, our deputy city clerk, Roxanne Faber. Allison, she is our new office assistant, too, she was promoted. And Ms. Rochelle Scott, our deputy city clerk. These ladies have held my hand since the day I walked in the door. They've, they've upheld me, they've made me look so good, and they've taught me everything I know about Pondell so far. They've, they've upheld me, they've made me look so good, and they've taught me everything I know about Palmdale so far. I'm trying to learn the rest on my own, but they, they have been an integral part of my, since the inception of, of my career here, and, and I just appreciate them, and I wanted to honor them publicly. So, thank you so much.
Well, council, move down.
Our little picture area.
There's a couple signatures missing, if you just wanna grab the marker there and sign your name, if you hadn't. See, I'll get a picture without your name in there.
'Cause I have the longest name in the world, sorry.
One of those ones up, yeah, they're in the middle. Break up the, break up the, the, the.
No, you're perfect right there. That's. Yeah, seriously, just.
Perfectly amazing.
Yeah. No hiding, Austin. That way a little bit, Austin, okay. All right. I'm gonna shoot about three of them. That's it, one more. One more. Hey, you wanna do them without masks? I mean, you're all, everybody's vaccinated, right? Okay, everybody's vaccinated, it's gonna lessen. Austin, that way, just a little bit.
What's that?
Austin, he's trying to hide. All right.
Why are you hiding, Austin?
One, two, three. One, two, three. And one more, that's for it. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other signatures here, or you want?
We got Austin. Oh, oh, that one too.
Austin? Yeah.
Okay, council, this, the next proclamation is National Public Works Week, May 16th through May 22nd, 2021. Whereas public works, infrastructure, and services provided to our community play an integral role in Palmdale's quality of life, and whereas the effective maintenance and operation of traditional public works, infrastructure, and services such as streets and highways, bikeways and trails, water and sewer systems, flood control, and solid waste collection depends on the support and understanding of informed citizens, and whereas the infrastructure and services provided to the community could not be provided at public buildings, facilities, and parks without the hard work and dedicated efforts of public works professionals. And the health and safety, welfare, and comfort of the city's residential and business community greatly depend upon the foregoing public works, infrastructure, and services. And whereas, the quality and effectiveness of public works, infrastructure, and services, as well as its planning, design, construction, and maintenance, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of qualified and dedicated public works personnel who staff our American Public Works Association accredited Public Works Department and serve the public good. Now therefore, Stephen D. Hoffbauer, Mayor of the City of Palmdale, on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby proclaim May 16th through May 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public works, infrastructure, and services, and to recognize the contributions which our public works representatives make every day to our community. So, we will make sure Chuck and Lynn have this, and I wanna thank you.
Do we have a cute critter, or not? Yes, we do? Okay.
There it is.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt and council members. Tonight, we have these two very, very handsome boys. Turbo was a owner surrender when they could no longer take care of him. Very energetic, very loving, but would probably do best in a home with children that are probably middle school age or above, and would probably do best in a home with only one, him being the only dog. And then you have Butters. There is a great backstory behind Butters. Butters was actually brought to the Palmdale Animal Care Center by one of our City of Palmdale employees who intervened when Butters was literally kicked out of a truck in the parking lot. She was able to scoop him up, spend some time with him, and take him to the Palmdale Animal Care Center. And I have seen videos of her with him, and pardon the pun, but he literally melts like butter when he is with somebody. He turns into just a giant, loving lapdog. Both of these adorable, handsome boys are available at the Palmdale Animal Care Center. It is by appointment only, but if you would like to make an appointment to see one of these guys, you can just email palmdale@animalcare.lacounty.gov and reference their intake numbers. And as always, anybody that adopts one of the council cute critter featured pets is eligible for a gift bag simply by contacting Palmdale Public Safety. So, take a look at these guys, they deserve a loving home, and adopt, don't shop.
Thank you, Carrie. So, yes, two boys looking for homes. Okay, we're now on number 11, the waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances.
So moved, okay.
Was that a second?
Second.
Do we have any public comments?
I'll just read this out loud. Now is the time for public participation. For any person wishing to speak to the city council on matters listed or not listed on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. If you attended the meeting by phone, please press star nine and raise your hand. If attended by personal computer, please click the raise your hand button, press star six to unmute, state your name, and begin speaking. It will be a three-minute time imposed on each speaker. Caller, if you're there, please state your name and the item you're speaking to.
Hi, was this permission for Kalen David to speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is about agenda item, I believe, of 13.7. Good evening, Mayor Hoffbauer and city council members, I'm Kalen David, a proud trustee on the City of Palmdale's library board for the past four years. Tonight on the agenda, you'll be reviewing and discussing item 13.7, a resolution of the library board of trustees to abandon the practice of charging fines on overdue library items. The board has held this topic of interest, research, discussion, and consultation for about a year now. When reviewing a policy change so radical, we ensured the entire process was informed by our community's needs, our city's budget and goals, and the library's vision and mission. Our wonderful library director, Mr. Schup, and assistant library director, Mrs. Beck, ensured that any data, literature, and information we needed to make a well-informed provision of policy was provided. They deserve a mountain of praise for meeting every request of the board. I also want to acknowledge President Hinkin, who so eloquently conducted each meeting and kept all board members on track with the nuances of our discussions. Despite the most pressing issues of the past year being making changes in services in accordance with public health officials, we still found time to fulfill our regular roles as trustees regarding policy evaluation and recommendations. Tonight's library board resolution represents a consensus of every board member to eliminate overdue fines for library constituents. We deeply hope that this move to remove barriers for nearly 20% of our library patrons will bring people back into our city library. Almost two years ago, the library conducted a survey and found many people were not even aware of the many services, programs, and resources the library hosts and offers. With the adoption of this revised policy, thousands of Palmdale and neighboring residents would again gain access to the library's many features. This past year and a pandemic has presented many challenges to our community. I have so much pride for our library and for our city for prioritizing the library and continuing to fund programs that helped our neighbors in the tough time. From bookmobiles, run-and-go activities, virtual programs, and the summer lunch program partnering with Palmdale School District, our city has continued to find ways to meet our residents where they are. This move to eliminate late fines will be a historic change for our residents. Palmdale will be a leader in libraries around the country, as well as the American Library Association, who are now realizing that penalties don't encourage patrons to be active or responsible members of a public library. As we move into an era of change with the Palmdale 2045 general plan in the works, we believe this move to eliminate library overdue fines is in line with creating a city that serves all its people. I look forward to listening to your discussion tonight regarding the development and goals of the suggested policy, and hope that the city council members will be in agreement with and unity with the library board members. Lastly, we hope that after reviewing the policy, it would be approved and instated as soon as possible. Thank you for your continuing service in a truly revolutionary time.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do we have anyone else for public comments?
At this time, no.
Okay, great. Okay, do I actually need to close public comments? Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to number 13, consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion unless an item is pulled by council, in which case the item will be removed from the calendar and will be considered separately following this portion of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they would like to pull?
I'll pull 13.5 and 13.14.
Okay, anyone else?
13.13 for me.
Okay. Mr. Lowey, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
13.13, the Rancho Vista Boulevard.
Okay, Juan, Juan pulled that one.
Kinda lost the the notice of completion on the Rancho Vista Boulevard, what, what number is that?
13?
That 13.13?
Sure.
Okay.
13.11?
13, yeah, 13.11.
So, councilmember Loa, you wanna pull 13.11?
If it's the Rancho Vista Boulevard.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So, mine shows 13.13.
I just have a fuller version.
It's the version that was here Tuesday.
Okay, so I'll, I'll need a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 13.5, 13.11, 13.13, and 13.14?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go ahead and start with 13.5.
Okay, now is there a report?
Pardon me?
For a report for 13.5?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Hi, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt, members of the city council. The item before you tonight, under 13.5, is a recommendation brought to you by the Board of Library Trustees recommending to do two things. Eliminate the policy and practice of charging fines on overdue materials, and then if approved, authorize the city manager to set the effective date for this new practice as July 1st, 2021. Just wanna give a little background and kinda set the stage for this item. My role with the library board of trustees is to be staff representative during their, their, their meetings. Our library director, Robert Schup, is also available with us tonight. He's joining us all the way from Utah, and our president, Mr. Alan Hinkin, is also here representing the board, and can answer any questions that you have and speak on the board's behalf. Just want to know, want you to know that the library board of trustees really drove this initiative. They discussed it for over a year. In early 2020, two different board members brought up this item, and in March of 2021, the library board approved this resolution five to zero to recommending to the city council to implement this new policy. The fiscal impact is about $25,000 in lost revenue for the, for the fines. I'm gonna turn it over to the library director, kind of the subject matter, Robert, to discuss this item a little further.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt and members of the city council, I'm gonna join you here from the inside of my rental car, and I'm glad this opportunity to speak to this. I'm on my phone, so I apologize for any technical challenges that may occur. A few points that I would like to mention regarding the studies that that is in the background information you received. Just wanna emphasize, the studies had been conducted and show that contrary to popular opinion, the charging of fines on items that are returned late to libraries does not result in materials being returned on time more often. Second point is, it is a fact that having a policy of charging overdue fines discourages some people from applying for a card in the first place, and that the threat of a fine will dislaid low-income families from using the library because of the fear of possibly being charged overdue fines. The the council of the American Library Association, which is an elected body from the library profession, supports eliminating barriers to community members to use the library, including charging late fines. They passed a formal resolution to that effect. This is a trend across the country, has been for the last couple of years. And I would mention that I would mention that here in Southern California. I would mention that here in Southern California. Altadena, Glendale, Sierra Madre, Simi Valley, South Pasadena, Los Angeles Public, LA County, Santa Monica, Rancho Mirage, and Victorville have all taken similar steps in the last couple of years. The last point I want to make and emphasize is that if the city council approves this change in policy and practice, it would not affect the current policy and practice of charging, billing, and pursuing patrons who do not return items, damage items, seem to be stealing items. None of that would change. We pursue them vigorously now, and we would continue to do that. So, so what is before you would only affect the practice and policy of charging fines on materials that are returned late. Those are the comments that I've prepared in advance. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I would like to mention and, and point out that library board president Alan Hinkin is also on the call and available for comment. If you'd like to hear from me, thank you.
At what point does it change from a document, a book, or an item that has not been returned from it's late to it's been lost? At what point in time?
Our current policy and practice is when an item has been late for 45 days, then it is automatically considered lost in the system, in the computer system, and then the item is and then the patron gets a bill notice, is what we call it. It receives several late notices up until that point to remind them that the item is late, and then in 45 days, that's when the, the item is then billed to their account.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Well, the reason I pulled the item is because I wanted to praise the library board for their work in progressive, forward-thinking. We have a fantastic library right here at City Hall, and it's something that I feel that could be utilized way more by our residents here in the City of Palmdale. So, I appreciate the, the work that you guys are doing. I thank Ms. David for comments this evening, and I support this. I think it's gonna be good to get more people in our library and open up those doors to the public any way we can.
Great. Anybody else have any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Anybody with a second?
Second.
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay.
Do, do we do a voice vote on this?
Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Loa.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item number 13.11, notice of completion for Capitol Project 709 Rancho Vista Boulevard, waiting gap. Do we have anyone to speak on that?
Hi, this is Glenn Glenn. Can you guys hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, I am here for questions.
I, I only pulled the item because I want to thank the residents of the Rancho Vista community, West Palmdale, and other residents out that way that had to endure quite a bit of of delay and disruption.
of delay and disruption in the traffic patterns. But I think that it was taken in stride. I think the people cooperated, and, uh, overall, uh, the result has been a, uh, huge improvement on Rancho Vista Boulevard. And so I'll commend, uh, our residents primarily, and, uh, then everyone involved in the project itself. So, it looks great, and, uh, I think it, I think we should approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve, and actually, that's a gentleman, uh, the other day ago, uh, made a comment saying it's complete, looks great, thank you.
Yep, so second that.
Anybody else have any other comments before we call for the vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Caddio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to item number thirteen point thirteen, Approve Funding Agreement with Caltrans to Provide California Public Utilities Commission Funds for Project, uh, on Rancho Vista Boulevard and Sierra Highway.
I I pulled this item. I wanted to get a clarification from staff and for the benefit of the public, uh, to see what this means, the way that I interpret in this is that Caltrans is giving the, uh, California Public Utilities Commission, uh, an amount of three point seven millions for the, uh, great separation of Sierra Highway uh, and Rancho Vista Boulevard. Uh, Lynn, I think that's you. Can you can you elaborate on what that means to the to the project?
Yes, this is Lynn Glidden again. Um, again, this is not for the great separation. This is for the aggregate crossing, the railroad crossing at Rancho Vista and Sierra Highway, and it's to improve the crossing aspects of it, the rail lines. Um, it is not associated with the app, with the overpass. But again, the CPUC has determined that this crossing, um, needs to be updated. Um, so they have, uh, got ahead and budgeted the funding for us. It's actually a total of about a nine million dollar project. Um, our portion of it is about the three point seven million, which they are funding. The other two entities is MetroLink and UPRR, and their portion is about six million, uh, between those two.
Yeah, I I saw that. That is for the, uh, great crossing program, but, and so there is no relationship to the, uh, overpass, and, um, there is no opportunity to work together to get a design, uh, to coordinate or to match for the overpass, because these are two separate projects, and it's just not, uh, there's not a good timing to, uh, work on the design for the overpass and this. Um, my concern is that there potentially be some, um, um, some ways where this project may be in the way of the overpass, uh, without working, coordinating coordinating both of those projects. But because of timing, that that's not possible, correct?
Um, it's it's not so much, well, it is it is a little bit on timing and also funding. The overpass cost is about sixty-plus million dollars. Um, the to upgrade this portion of the the, just the railway is about nine. Um, uh, if if the overpass is going to go, which at this time, we just don't have a good idea. It it could be several years down the line. Um, this this work will be kind of, I guess you could say, throwaway work. Um, but again, it's not out of our pocket. CPUC is looking at it. But, um, this is just more of a safety concern with the CPUC. The the great, oh, the great separation project, we are actually about ninety-five percent designed. It's already in through, uh, UPRR and, uh, MetroLink and everybody else that needs to review this. Um, we're actually looking to try and define additional funding to begin our right-of-way on the grade separation project. So, we are, we're kind of running both projects a little bit simultaneously, but we know that the grade separation project is at least, I would say, five years out. Um, one, if we all of a sudden had a a flush of money, we would be probably about two years into just for right-of-way, and then we have to go out and construct. So, then you're looking at at another three-plus years. So, this project should happen a lot faster. Um, it will provide us with what CPUC is is stating that it is it is needed at this intersection, provide a better efficiency and, um, traffic circulation in the time being. Um, and then we're we're just, like I said, running these projects simultaneously.
Yeah, Lynn, this is, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt.
Yes.
I I guess what I'd like to know is for the three point seven million dollars, I mean, if we, if you live in the Antelope Valley, you have stopped for a train at Sierra Highway and Rancho Vista Boulevard, uh, that goes without saying. What what kind of improvements will the public actually see with this project, uh, for the three point seven million dollars? Will they will they actually see anything, or this is just kind of a internal, uh, safety measures? What 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 exactly?
I I think it's gonna be kind of more internal safety measures. We're not gonna be, there'll be no widening aspect of this this project. Um, um, there'll be some, um, traffic signal, timing issues, some reconstruction of the median islands. But, you know, for this money, it is, it is a fairly small amount for, you know, for the people to see.
Okay.
It's it's not a large project, but I think with regards to the traffic aspect and the and the signal and the train, it benefits on their costs more so, and that's where the CPUC is saying that it is definitely needed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any more questions?
Let's approve the item.
Second.
Okay, can we call it, call for vote?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Caddio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number thirteen point fourteen.
Uh, I pulled this item to, uh, recuse myself from this vote, uh, big, um, out of abundance of caution of any potential conflict.
Okay, thank you.
And I have questions on this item. I was was gonna pull it as well. Um, I'd just like to know, what does this mean for the council to take action outside of its jurisdiction? We have jurisdiction over the city of Palmdale. We're elected officials for the city of Palmdale. But what does this really mean, uh, for the city council to take action outside of its jurisdiction? Question, or?
I can take that, yeah, sure. Yeah, what this is, and specifically here, so it's, um, the way it's, I'll I'll try to give you the shorter version, um, so I get too much into the weeds. The Brown Act requires that city councils meet only in their jurisdiction, right? However, when you have a joint meeting, it allows us to meet in another jurisdictions, within another jurisdiction, so long as this, one of the, where the meeting takes place is within one of the jurisdictions of the joint meeting of the bodies. So, we are able to do that in Lancaster. Any action that's taken at this meeting will be independently taken up by each individual council or authority, right? So, uh, a vote would come from the city of Lancaster, and then a vote would come from the city of Palmdale. And so, at the action we take will be binding, as any action we take here, and we are allowed to take, uh, action within the jurisdictional limits of Lancaster because it's a joint meeting with them.
So, this has to do with meeting next week?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's clear for me, thank you. We'll go approve the item.
Okay, second. Call for vote?
Okay.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Caddio?
Yes.
And Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Thank you, all she cares.
All right, should we go get Austin? Can he hear us?
Oh.
There he is. Okay, so we're gonna actually move on to new business, item number fourteen point one, presentation by Analyst Lopez. Hello, Nari.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. I hope you're all feeling good today. You've had a good day. Um, this, tonight, we bring before you agreement with the Wellbeing Lab to initiate initiate and implement a training and coaching program that pairs well-being and change in communities and organizations to help create and sustain a robust solution to the health and economic challenges in communities. I am honored to present this item tonight because it's, it addresses a subject that is close to home, to our community and our residents. Mental health is real. It's a daily challenge for many individuals, families, and communities. An alarming statistic reported by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention showed that forty percent of all U.S. adults reported struggling with mental health, suicidal thoughts, or substance abuse early in the pandemic. In the past two years, seventy-two percent, there's been a seventy-two percent increase in mental health challenge throughout LA County, and it worsened during COVID. After listening to the voices in the community regarding the critical need for sound mental health and well-being in our community, the city researched and discovered an innovative program that addresses the needs and problems we currently face, the Wellbeing Lab. It helps measure, talk about, and increase well-being at multiple levels as the strategy for challenge in the system. It proposes a strength-based scientifically-informed solution to community mental health challenges. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Louis Aloro of the Wellbeing Lab to share a brief overview of the program. Louis is a champion of empowering change leaders to deliver impactful learning experience, helping communities and teams build psychological safety, improve innovation, and create positive change. Louis is a senior fellow at the Center for Advancement of Wellbeing and has trained and certified thousands of practitioners around the world in applied positive psychology. And here is Louis.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, wonderful. Good to be here with you tonight. Thanks for inviting me to come and share a little bit about what we have proposed for a, um, a leadership well-being initiative for the region here, for Palmdale residents to to really think about well-being at this crazy time in our human history where, um, challenges are surmounting for lots of people. So, it's, it's, as Nari said, with the with in increase in mental health challenges, there's also physical health challenges and economic health challenges and all sorts of of real-life stuff that people are up against. So, the question is, how do people show up to the to to life, you know, with what tools and strategies to be resilient in the face of adversity or to, um, to navigate these challenges and struggles which are inevitable? Um, so that's where we come in. We're we're really here to help support cities, um, and counties with, um, not just measuring well-being and getting a glimpse of what's going on for people, but to also teach about well-being, to teach that stress and struggle are natural parts of life. Um, and and really, you know, with what tools and strategies can we care for well-being? Um, not a one-off exercise, of course, so doing this work in community, in learning cohorts where people are coming together, um, as as, uh, a shared learning experience is really what our design is about. So, what we would, uh, be really honored to help Palmdale with is building a well-being coalition within the region. So, um, bringing together stakeholders from across different institutions, organizations, programs even, that are, um, looking out for the well-being of Palmdale people. Um, and so what we'd like to do is is organize better into a more of a collective impact model for how we address some of these really complex challenges. And to do so, we need to speak a common language. So, that's where training, um, community well-being champions and people, practitioners, um, of all sorts, people that are working in the school system and the health system, in the business system, to come together to to share this language, to share this toolbox, um, so that we can send those people back into the community better equipped to help other people. And that's really the the model here is to, um, have a train-the-trainer type of experience where people are then supported in in, um, in in executing on different ways of bringing this work to other people. So, what you see here is is what some of our learning experience can can look like, really just bringing people together for, um, a a a deeper immersion of of connection with themselves, with each other. And then really, um, I'm not gonna show that video to you now, but, um, there's really this, uh, call to action that that we give people. Um, and here's an illustration of what the impact can look like across our community. This was in training fifty leaders in, um, in central Michigan, um, the the first part of two thousand and twenty. Um, allow them then to execute on these fifty different impact projects that you see on the screen here, ways of applying what people have learned within the the Positive Psychology Certification. Positive Psychology teaches people, um, you know, all sorts of strategies, skills, um, all science-based, grounded in really good research, and then quite practical, as you can see here, um, supporting people in bringing what they've learned to, um, to the work of D E I N J or to the work of community, um, development, to the work of of healthcare and how we do health, um, in Palmdale, um, what we're doing in workplaces to bring some of this, um, these these strategies in, and of course, schools. So, here's the model that we use to organize the course. It comes from, um, my mentor, Martin Seligman, at the University of Pennsylvania, and you could see, um, just different components of, um, of, we call these the factors of well-being, different gauges that can be changed and elevated or amplified, uh, when we, um, learn about them. And so here's a little glimpse of what this program covers. It's a six-month learning experience. Um, it would be the way that we would help Palmdale build and execute a well-being coalition, um, is to is to train the right group of people in in a learning experience that would last six months, and then, um, would involve some live experiences in Palmdale, some virtual experiences, um, all the while just encouraging participants, coaching them, giving them what they need to apply with their learning for themselves, for their families and their work teams, for the entire organizations or for the community at large. I have a team of people supporting me, um, that are wonderful, including, um, Dr. Thomas Schultz, who's also local to Southern California here, who is who's really ready and and, um, and eager to help us with this project. So, I'm gonna stop, share there, and ask, uh, are there any questions?
Anyone have questions?
Uh, yeah, will you actually be coming out to our community and and having in-person meetings with the stakeholders?
Yes, forward to meeting you.
Okay, and how many meetings, how many meetings within a year will will you be doing?
Well, the program, the learning program itself meets monthly to, uh, a day and a half monthly. So, for at least six months, I will be there for a day and a half, um, consecutive for for the learning programs. But there's gonna be a lot of, uh, gearing up for that. So, you'll see me, um, leading up to that in 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 building, um, awareness that this is a thing that Palmdale is engaging with and, um, and and really recruiting the right participants for that first cohort so that the Wellbeing Coalition can get off the ground and can be something that's sustained way past the six months that I'm gonna be, um, teaching the class to your to your residents.
No community is the same, not the same approach will feed everywhere. What what are what are your techniques that you're going to apply to find out what will a residence need, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, mental health? And what type of, uh, resources, um, do you anticipate that, uh, this program will provide to a residence? Again, because what worked for Missouri or Michigan, whatever that state, uh, your presentation was, um, it's just not gonna be the same for us here in in the Antelope Valley, in the city of Palmdale. Um, have you started doing some research on the Antelope Valley and see what challenges we have? Uh, one of them, uh, a lot of our residents commute. Um, some of us drive two hours to get to work, uh, going down the fourteen freeway, and it's just very stressing having to leave your family early, and you sometimes kids have to get to school, now that schools are open, some of them. Uh, and the ones that stay home, they have to be responsible enough to be able to open the Zoom, uh, classes and all of that stuff. So, it's frustrating for parents having to do that and, uh, after working long hours and drive another two hours to get back home and hoping that, uh, the kids stay safe. I mean, that's something that we'll worry about for those of us that have to commute. Um, have you started doing some of that, uh, research trying to get in our community? Or are you going to depend on, um, surveys so that you directly hear from our residents, uh, what type of, um, mental health services do we need?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I completely agree with you a hundred percent. This is, uh, what works in one community is not what works in another community. And so, coming at it with a with a- And so coming at it with a with a real iterative kind of mindset, design thinking approach to. What's going to work well here in Palmdale? And you're absolutely right. We want to hear from the residents themselves. We want to. Focus groups of of people to understand better what the specific well being challenges are. And of course, surveying. So one of the pieces of this proposal and the scope of work you'll notice is to. Take a baseline measure of well being in Palmdale where we can assess some of those things that you're you're suggesting. What's working well when it comes to well being in Palmdale? Where are people gravitating towards for support? And and maybe where where are there opportunities to 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 address some of the places where people could use some more help? So. Certainly, an evaluation tool we have in place to be able to do that. Before we get this going, as we get this going and during, just to make sure that we're we're hitting the mark and making sure that we're. Working with the Palmdale people and in this solution. This is not an off the box, out of the box kind of solution that it's. It it's not about plug and play as much as it's about building capability in. Local resources to be able then to to sustain some of the implementation of. Of perhaps additional learning programs or experiences that can help people in the community itself. You know, navigate that commute maybe in a different way. You know, it's not not that this work changes someone's conditions, but how people. Show up to those conditions certainly can make a world of difference. And so that's that's what we're we're after here.
Another thing, a large sector of our population, it's like fifty four percent, maybe even a little bit more now. They're Hispanic, Spanish speaking. And I I do hope that you thought about doing the Spanish outreach. And that that was calculated into your your budget or the the way that you got to get this contract. Because that's one of the challenges too. Reaching out to our community that sometimes feel intimidated and. If they may find out that it's a government program and then there may be some hesitation. So I just wanted you to keep that in mind as well, reaching out in Spanish, because we have a large sector of our population. That will need that so that we can be able to provide as much as possible. In, you know, in in our own language. I think that's also very important as well.
Excellent question, Juan. I was I was going to bring that up as well. Is this program set up to be bilingual or have you done it in? In Spanish in other cities already?
We have not done it in Spanish in other cities already, though we have. We have brought the proposal with this in mind and the woman I pointed out earlier, Dr. Schultz, Thomas Schultz. It will play that key role in helping us reach Spanish speaking participants. So. You know, we would be able to. Support Spanish speaking participants with Thomas, with Thomas assistance. The course itself is not in Spanish. But we have had lots of conversations with some of the Palmdale people already around how we can reach out and include. Be as inclusive as possible in who participates in that cohort. We want it to be very diverse and equitable. So. While we haven't done it before, we can, we can work with that being.
So when you're when you're doing your initial surveys for gauging the baseline of our wellness here. Could you at least do the surveys in English and Spanish? Could you come up with that?
Yeah, I don't think that should be at all a problem. We and I and I, yeah, let me get back to you on that, but it should be okay to do that.
Counsel, I just want to point out, we, when we started this, we made sure and we put money in and and we outlined that. So Louis. Who lives in Southern California hired another Southern Californian who is bilingual to join his team. So I don't want you to think. This is like Zoom or anything, they they live here, they're gonna. They're gonna jump on the fourteen and come up here. They're gonna learn that the community you're talking about, counsel. But I I I I would be remiss if I don't point out. A few weeks ago, you know, mental health has been critical for the entire community, for the entire world. About two, three weeks ago, we had a meeting with all of the Antelope Valley service providers. And I don't think you'll be surprised to hear that a lot of them didn't know what the other ones were doing. A program like this can bring those people together so they can network, not just in mental health. But in community health, in business, in the aerospace industry. So this is the framework of what we're hoping is a leadership Antelope Valley. So but we absolutely made sure that we were going to address. Our community in this program. And I think this his proposal did address that. So it was paramount initially, but I appreciate the, you know, the points.
That was a question I was going to ask, whether you were based here in Los Angeles County. I would have liked to have seen that those images that you presented here a little bit ago. I don't think that's included in our materials. So you're based here in Los Angeles County then?
We did get them, didn't we?
The handouts were given out on Tuesday night. We didn't print them out tonight.
Okay, I I I don't know. I I was here Tuesday night and I don't remember receiving it.
Okay, well.
But but my question is, you are based here in Los Angeles County?
I am, yeah. I'm a graduate PhD student at the Antioch University. I am, the well being lab is a is an affiliation. It's a global organization. And we have, we have representatives in lots of different places. And I think that'll be great for Palmdale, just to connect with. Well being initiatives that are going on in different places, even around the world right now, to learn from and with each other about how to support people at this. Time. But I personally am a, I live in Claremont and I am I'm happy to drive the fourteen to.
You might want to come around to one thirty eight in Claremont.
And if I may add, I believe that Telnah and Louis, you can correct me if I'm wrong. She knows the Antelope Valley because she used to work up here. I believe she stated that she covered this area. I don't know if she worked in social services or, but she did state that she.
Come to this area, so she was familiar with the Antelope Valley and the demographics as well.
Okay, I wasn't quite done yet. So one of the largest populations of persons suffering from mental health. In the United States are confined to the Los Angeles County Jail. How many programs have you engaged in that includes the Los Angeles County Jail, their mental health services? And the court system that are now offering mental health courts, district attorneys who are assigned to mental health court. Judges that are assigned to mental health court. Have you had any links and anything to do to include them in this project?
Yes, and the the other community well being initiatives always involve folks that are working with jails. In incarceration and drug courts even. And so we do want to have representatives from these places participate in the building of this coalition. So that they can be the ones to to go back to the jail or go back to the drug corridor and and room with their learning. Because that to us is the the way to sustain the solution is not to impose it on, but to build it with. So that's where we really want to get folks from, you know, representatives from these places, stakeholders from these places. Even, you know, you know, people who have been incarcerated themselves, right, to participate so that they can. They can be coached and supported in 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 finding newer solutions, innovative solutions to some of these really complex challenges. And that's where the collective. Impact model really works is to bring people across organizations, across sectors even, right, to to. To work on this complex challenge of how do we, how do we help mental health? How do we help people that are kind of okay? Become what more well? How do we help people who are really sick? Become less sick, right, and and hopefully well. So it's a, it's a systems. Solution that really is to is to bring together the right people for the building of this coalition. And maybe that would include some of you or some of the people that some of you know as as prime participants.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that this is truly a substantive program. That's going to have a positive impact in terms of making inroads into the crisis that we're facing in mental health across the board. It's a really difficult thing. I think that the laws addressing these issues some somehow leave some. Gaps in terms of including people that need intervention, immediate intervention. This affects families. That have individuals in their homes who have mental health. And many times, law enforcement, social workers, no one can actually do anything to address that individual. And I'm hoping that we can make some steps towards that with your program. In terms of perhaps bringing about a positive change to address these really critical problems that people face. So I thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you for your passion for this topic.
Yeah, I I I thank you too, Louis. Louis, I hope you feel feel like we're beating you up too much. I think we're just trying to stress the point that we're a very large and diverse community and we want to make sure this. Program is as equitable as possible. And just one more quick question to tap on on one of the points that Juan made. Earlier is just, can you tell me what of like one or the one or two top resources that you give these stakeholders? To go out with the community? What have, what have you supplied them with to go back out in the community to to go help the community? What are some of those things?
Great question. Well, a whole toolkit really that involves. Assessment tools. One of them is a strengths assessment tool that we use a lot to 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 assess character strengths. That tool's in Spanish and in English. And it really just puts language to people's strengths, right? So we're so good at looking in the mirror and finding our flaws. And so this helps build a strengths based language that then comes with a whole bunch of tools in there, right? How to be a strengths spotter, for example, how to how to notice people in actions. Using their strengths and with what words can we even use to to point that out to people to help them see themselves? So that's just one example. There's there's resilience tools, for example, a lot of cognitive behavioral. Strategies for catching catching some of the things that you're saying to yourself even from moment to moment. And helping people have greater confidence and motivation around creating change in their lives, right? If you were to ask people, you know, you know, on a scale of one to five, how is your life today? And how do you? How do you wish it to be tomorrow? And then if you ask them, you know, do you believe that your life will change? We really want to help people remember that they have choices and how they want to show up to to life and. We have science that's showing, you know, what works to help people, to empower people. And so when you envision empowering people to go and then empower other people, that's how we create a a viral solution to something that's really. Complex, as you're all saying.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, so, oh, Nardi, do you want to speak or are you just up here for questions? Okay, because I don't want to cut you off. So do we need to make a motion to approve this?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. So. Yes?
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, we're all counting on you, Louis.
Thank you, Louis.
That was positive.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item number fourteen point two. And this will be finance manager King. Oh, he's online. There he is.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Fortem and council members. Item before you is refunding of two thousand seven bonds, which is power plant bonds. Staff are, staffs are asking council to adopt three resolutions. CC twenty twenty one dash oh five one, PFA twenty twenty one dash zero zero one. Twenty, P, P C A twenty twenty one dash zero zero one. Resolutions are approving the form and authorizing execution of certain lease financing documents. In connection with the refunding of City of Palmdale taxable certificates of participation. Two thousand seven land acquisition financing project and authorizing and directing certain actions with respect to. So this bond refunding is basically saving us two hundred seventy six thousand dollars a year. And needs to be voted separately. Joining us tonight are Susan Harrow, our municipal advisor. And Brian Quint, bond counsel. So I'm going to ask Susan to discuss further on this topic. Susan?
Thanks, Keith. Good evening, Mayor Fortem and members of the C Council. So this item before you tonight will. Refinance your two thousand seven bonds and will save approximately four million dollars over the remaining fifteen years. That's left for the financing. The city used the proceeds of the original bonds to acquire about six hundred and forty acres next to the airport. This refinancing will free up about two hundred and fifty acres for the airport expansion. And so the land used for the to secure the lease for this project will only be about three hundred and seventy five acres. And that's right along the. Sierra Highway border of the project. So again, the. The financing is just really here to save money and I'm here to answer any more questions.
Anyone have questions?
Just a statement, when it comes to these lower interest rates, I'm loving it.
Good.
That's it.
So this is the site where the power plant was going to go?
Yes.
So how many acre, can you repeat the acreage again?
Sure, there was originally, the bonds are issued to acquire six hundred and forty acres. These bonds will only be secured by three hundred and seventy five of those acres. The remaining acreage is going to be available to. For your airport expansion, these three.
Do you know what the balance is on the bond for the? Power plant?
It's approximately fourteen million. And so the interest rate is over six percent. The interest rate on the new bonds will be a little bit under four percent.
Four point one. Anything we can do to save money on this makes me happy.
Over six is too much.
Thank you.
No, not yet. More questions. I'd like to see if the council can get a deeper briefing into this, not necessarily by Ms. Harrow, but by staff. I'd like to get a better understanding of how this is working. And I had no idea that we were trying to refinance. It's a good thing. I'm not saying that it's not. But this site became such a point of contention. That we were blamed for some decisions made by previous councils. And I just, it takes me by surprise finding out this way. So if, when it's time to request for items, I'd like to see we can get briefed. I have some questions that I'd like to ask staff, again, not necessarily to Ms. Harrow, because that's.
Do you want to table the item and come back to it or?
Yeah, we'll come back to that.
Can I just mention that this refinance has nothing to do with the projects we've talked about developing on those acres?
Yeah.
It's just a financial. It it's it's a way to save money on a bill we're currently paying.
But it's separating acreages. That's why you asked what the, what the acreage that was mentioned. It was six hundred and forty acres. I don't know what the wording that you used, but it's separating three hundred and seventy five acres for the potential airport. So again, I just need to get more details on this at a later time.
Question, if if we table this, will, do we still lock in that four point one two percent interest rate or is it something that could change?
Marie shaking her head no back there. This was the, one of the reasons that we brought it back tonight because there was a timing issue on the refinancing.
I'm okay with the refinancing. Again, it's a good thing.
Can we get a report back?
Okay.
It shows the history behind it that I'd like to get some answers to.
Sure. And 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 I.
Can I make a motion to approve pending we get a report back on this with what Mr. Freitas asked me for?
Before that, there's another question I have on the. One of the items that we just approved on the concerned calendar item. Before that, there's another question I have on the um uh one of the items that we just approved on the concerned calendar item. Something that I've been asking since day one, too. The um park and maintenance and recreation improvement district.
Which number is that?
That's number thirteen point eight of the concerned calendar. Again, it's already approved. But I just want to have verification if any of this fine refinancing has anything to do with the park maintenance and recreation improvement district.
Keith, you want to handle that?
Yes, uh, a councilman has one for you. I'm gonna follow you on uh the questions you may have on the fourteen point two item, including the history. Uh, so I'm going to have to provide you any information you need.
Yeah, and if you can also look into item thirteen point eight, again, it's already approved, but I just want to know this has anything to do with the park and maintenance and recreation improvement district from two thousand and one.
I I don't think it's related to each other.
Okay, let's. Okay, thanks.
I think there's been some noises about uh the Fed increasing interest rate. I don't know if that impacts this kind of uh finance, but um any motion to table, I'm just wondering if that's going to delay this at all?
No, I made a motion to approve it and then also with the request that we get a s- staff report back with the information that Mr. Krieger's asking for.
Do we have a second on that?
No.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Mayor Portem Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cariel?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Okay, so as we are locking in this rate then, Marie? Okay, yes.
Lock it in.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good. So that moves us to number fifteen, our informational reports from mayor or city councils on their various committee memberships and meetings. Who would like to start or you you my stuff has already been typed up and posted for public uh notice, so I don't have anything to speak of.
I'll go next. Um, yeah, my my um participation in various boards is also part of the agenda. Uh, today, there was the um SCAG annual um meeting, um not so much a conference, but at this time it was virtual. I attended the first session because of uh the pandemic. This was one of those studies virtually done. They was separated into two sessions, one from eight thirty to ten, and the general assembly from uh ten fifteen to noon, I believe. Um, an an item that caught my attention on the ten on the eight thirty uh session, um, the various assembly bills that are going um through the motions today. And the mayor's been very vocal about a couple of them. Uh, one of them is SB nine, the one that is proposing to subdivide uh properties um without going through a subdivision, it's kind of an administrative level. The 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 idea is to create more housing, as we all know. Um, there was a strong opposition, uh not only from SCAG but from other other organizations as well, like the California League of Cities and other ones that I'm a part of. Uh, but there was some compromise. The the motion was passed to deny support on SB nine, creating uh subdivisions at administrative level. But there there was some discussion that that item got pulled. And there was some sort of consensus that um if there are some other other minor changes, and that was instead of having the potential to have six dwelling units in a single family, because you have the single-family residential, which now you can do an ADU and a and a junior ADU. Uh, so potentially you could have three units in single family, your typical seven thousand square foot lots and and larger, obviously. Uh, the opposition was because if uh it is proposed to the state uh assembly uh the way that it was uh presented, then there is the potential of actually having six dwelling units
Oh, Lord.
into one uh one lot. Um, so again, it was there was strong support to to uh not support that. Um, but then there was some compromise in making it so that it's not six units, to still see the potential of uh doing an administrative level uh subdivision, splitting the lot in two, um but not have the six units. I don't know how that's gonna play. Uh, there still will be two, potentially four in one uh if it's subdivided. The the concern is on your typical single-family, seven thousand square foot lots, which are small. But then the argument was that there are other residential zoning designations that could go up to an acre or even more, two point five, five acres. That's obviously rural areas, which is some of some of our zoning, some of our areas allow for that. So that I I thought it was a a valid argument. What if it's a twenty-five thousand square foot lot, maybe half an acre or an acre, whatever the case may be? Then that uh could actually help in providing more housing in the state. Uh, so that's something that I I think it's something that we need to keep an eye on. Again, it's just starting to go to to the motions, so getting support from uh our agencies like SCAG and the League of Cities and other ones. That's the one that caught my attention. Just wanted you guys to
That should really be based on lot size.
Right.
Absolutely.
Um, other than that, I I think everything else is on on my report.
Okay, good. Next?
Uh, yeah. Um. Yeah, Palmdale Recycled Water Authority, I had that with Juan. Um, just a couple highlights here. I turned my report to you. Um, just going over some of the hotter items. Um, we're talking about going in a different direction with the recycled water board uh with phase two, I believe, as uh we're living in an ever-changing environment.
Hmm.
And I think right now we're looking at more potable water options.
Right.
Um, so that was that was uh one of the main discussions we had at the recycled water meeting. Uh, AVA QMD, we gave away almost a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in grants for new equipment for local businesses, uh some desert cleanup events. Um, and the NCTC uh meeting I attended where we got updates on uh Metro, Caltrans, all the various agencies related to transportation. The goal was we're working on to make transportation better and to get people, goods, and services in and out of this valley quicker and more efficiently. So it's a brief uh overview of my report.
And and for the public that wants more information of other meetings that we've attended, it is part of public record. We type it up and we attach it to um our our agenda packages for the public to read. And then if you have questions on anything that we've typed up, you're more than welcome to reach out to us and ask us for more detailed information.
Absolutely.
I was uh given the opportunity to be on uh Spanish radio yesterday along with uh Mayor Portem Bettencourt. I stood in for Mayor Portem Bettencourt and Mayor Portem Bettencourt stood in for the mayor.
That is true.
Uh, was not available due to uh due to being ill. Um, and uh the discussion we had there, uh there were several discussions, uh the mental health. But uh I I spoke uh about the redistricting issue and us urging uh the community to um participate uh in that. And we need uh uh we need participation in that. Uh, yesterday morning, today's Thursday, yesterday morning, um is the Palmdale Sheriff Boosters uh club on which I am a director. I'm actually the vice president there. And uh uh there's going to be a car show at Amo Valley Mall on June sixth. I think there was an article in the AV press about that. So as uh we begin to uh come out from under the COVID restrictions, there's going to be more and more uh public events. Uh, we definitely um want to be a make a difference uh in sometimes the funding gaps between what's budgeted for the sheriff's department and what sometimes is needed but is not budgeted for, and that's the purpose of the boosters organization. And we definitely need to start raising money. Uh, I attended the sanitation board. Um, I also attended the Palmdale Boosters in April. Um. We um we had at Amo Valley Transit Authority, uh both we had on April twenty seventh. Um, the purchase of buses, uh our organization, AVTA, is uh leading the nation in electrifying uh bus transportation and moving completely away from from diesel. Uh, I believe six new buses were purchased. Uh, and there was a wellness center uh that was inaugurated on April the twenty seventh as well that I attended along with uh councilmember Bishop and the mayor. Um, it's quite a quite a quite a building, quite a uh concentration of um uh equipment for exercising and all of those things. And uh I believe it's it's open for uh our res- well, it's open for our members here, for the sheriff's department and for AVTA.
Really generous of them to let our our deputies and firefighters who want to use it to to participate.
And the sanitation district. So those are some of the things that I attended during this last month.
Uh, just some other things um that we talked about on Spanish radio. We we also reminded the public that we do have a um police officer police officers memorial celebration on May eleventh at nine AM at Ponson Long Square for remembering those who gave ultimate sacrifice. Um, so please join us out there if you can uh to to show our respect for our fallen officers. And also we have a meeting on Memorial Day at, I believe, nine AM also to uh honor our our veterans that have given the ultimate sacrifice for our country. And that will also be at Ponson Long Square, so I look forward to seeing everybody out there for those two events.
Can I just add, um, since you've taken two of the three things I was gonna say?
Oh, sorry.
But uh I did want to point out that we are gonna have our first joint meeting in in o- over over ten years on Monday at at five thirty at the Allen Valley College Performing Arts Center. Uh, encourage the public, they can RSVP. Um, the agenda was published today. So I want to thank this board before we go there for your collaborative efforts and your supportive staff's working collaboratively. I I think the community's gonna benefit, and I think that meeting's gonna be monumental.
And and that that's open to the public, too, right?
Yes, but there there'll be directions that they have to RSVP and and they either have to have a vaccination card or uh sign up and have a a negative test.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so I guess um now it's the city manager's report, or was that it? I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to comment, and then uh uh councilman Loa, I just wanted to maybe give you a uh uh a remembering. Uh, I thought we had eleven members apply for the redistricting committee, and and I think you wanted to bring up at the end of this meeting, the potential for us to extend so we can get more applications. So I don't want to talk for you. I just want to kind of remind you before we adjourn.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. Uh, I believe that we're there's going to be eleven members on that redistricting committee. And it seems to me that um we should have more candidates than the you know what I mean? I think there has to be some flexibility there. Um, I I think we need to do some more re- more outreach. And um, so if we could get that extended, I would appreciate if we could
Can we extend for two weeks and and see if we get some more applications and
Yes, I would like to if we can.
Okay. Great.
But I thank you for bringing that up, yes.
Right.
Okay, is there any uh I'm sorry, was that it for you, city manager? I'm sorry.
That was, I uh
That doesn't take any vote by the council.
Does coun- council, can I just get?
Yes.
But we like
No.
This is a
Can you take action on just direction to staff, right? Because it's already within the purview of the our enabling uh underlying ordinance to specify timeframe. It's already within the purview of the city manager.
Good.
And so it's just a because it's off agenda, it's a direction to staff.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good.
Okay.
I know Ms. Smith has been concerned about that. I appreciate your concern and uh your willingness to help us uh get more candidates up there.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, anything else from the city manager? Okay, so any uh requests for new agenda items from the council members?
I do have a few. I just want to reiterate again that I'd like to get some briefings um on the bond financing that we just approved. Again, it really took me by surprise uh because of the sensitivity on the side for the power plant. Um, I mean, if you guys don't want to, that's up to you.
Oh, no, that's fine.
But if it's individually, two at a time, whatever the case may be, or just myself, that's fine. I just have some questions on that. I wish that we had uh been brought up to date on this one because that's something that I'm interested in. Um, the other day, um, I drove over to the city um and I noticed that um in some shopping centers by Ten Street West, they're getting electric vehicle charging stations. There may be through uh AVQMD, there may be through private investment. Um, and I just see that as another, yeah, I'm gonna bring up East versus West. Because I don't see anything um that is uh supporting us driving electric vehicles. Some of us do. Uh, and it I just took me by surprise. I was a pleasant surprise, but at the same time, I don't see anything over there. I get it, it's a ten of the fourteen freeway, the traffic, people drive uh Teslas and other electric vehicles, and they just go off the freeway and charge out their vehicles.
Yeah, but they come off the one thirty-eight, too.
One thirty-eight, that's where I'm going.
That's right.
I know that Pilot um has in its recent practice to add electric vehicle charging stations because they work and go through projects for Pilot. But also uh centers like Target, um any other commercial center that we have, uh loan forty-seven, um, the water park, um, Dominique Masari.
I I would like to see any public facility, um, wh- whether it, I mean, even even our sheriff station doesn't have a a charging spot for for uh electric vehicles, you know, and and we promote at at the county level, you know, rideshare, electric cars. But then you pull into our our parking lot at the sheriff's station, and if you had an electric car, you could not charge it there.
That's just another way of um not really encouraging us to
We have to put our money where our mouth is, frankly.
I understand where you're coming from. Juan, it's 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 difficult. I, as an electric car driver, I have a hard time finding places to charge that uh makes sense. Uh, is there something the the city or the staff could look at that make a requirement for future development?
I think you said it right. You can direct staff to bring that report to that.
Because I I know we have some development going on the east side.
I think there's an immediate solution. We can uh have staff talk to AVQMD and AVTA.
Yeah.
They have, you mentioned programs all the time.
Yeah.
And actually, I've been meaning to ask staff to reach out to AVK, uh AVT and AVQMD because they do have programs, and I'd like to have some of those uh, you know, along Highway one thirty-eight.
I agree. Well, here, before we start making agreements, just so we don't go too far down that road again. We can just the topic very broad and then direct staff like that, that'd be great.
All right, sounds good.
Well, there's more.
Okay.
I think we're all in support of what you're saying, Juan. It should be around the city.
Right, uh, I know you don't want to talk about this, but I just see that as an obstacle because it's just a way of somehow not supporting a certain part of part of the town who has the right to also have those facilities.
And there shouldn't be an imbalance uh insofar as that availability.
That that's that's my point. Thank you for um saying that. The other um briefing I'd like to have is on the um power bond, item thirteen point eight on the concerned calendar today. I brought that up again, and I'd like to get staff to also give me, if not everybody, a briefing on that. Um, the workforce housing project, I'd really like to know what the status is. I've been asking about putting a meeting together um more than three times, and I just don't see what the next step is. I do get that there is official paper, whether we need to get from SCAG as far as the grants. Yeah, it's nice to get the get it on paper, but I just don't want us to wait until early on June to start thinking about putting a meeting at the end of August. Um, I think it's imperative that we start talking to see what type of product we need, do that reach uh out to the agencies that are interested in in participating. It's a long process. It's not something that we're just gonna start doing once we get the the grant, and that's not enough. I mean, we need to get going uh because those are long-term projects, and we just keep waiting for getting an official letter. It's just, I just like to get that going. Uh, the other day
We will set that up. We will set that up. I mean, I know you and I spoke about it, but there there's, to your point, why I had a recent conversation with uh TPAA, uh we can follow up with the school district and we'll get the we'll get that meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, you guys can do that, do a staff label. I mean, that's something that uh also has been talked about with the board members, uh PSD and TPAA. And again, there's a opportunity for others others that want to participate. Um, the other day I went to to the park. I went to Yellin, took my kids, and we took a soccer ball, and we just went down to the basin or the field. And um then it started getting busy. Teams started to come in and start practicing. Uh, before we got there, I saw a couple of families on the grass, just playing with their little kids. But then you have these teams that are starting to use the park. You know, it it's soccer, the ball goes here and there, and people start running. Uh, and it just started to be uncomfortable for those families that were on the grass, just enjoying the the afternoon, the weather. It was a nice day, nice afternoon. And I I was paying attention to that because before I knew it, guess who left? Not the soccer teams, those two families that were sitting on the grass, just having a good time with their little kids. Then I I go up to the parking lot where to go home, and I just see a bunch of DG. Open field, no grass. And I think that uh we should look into our fund uh park development fees. I know that we saved some money because we didn't do any of the uh events that we typically do pre-COVID, so there must be some savings there. I wanted to ask the council, we can ask staff to look at the potential to add grass at Yellin.
Well, I just want for the for the residents that are watching, I just want to explain that DG Well, I just want, for the, for the residents that are watching, I just wanna explain that D G is a-
Decomposed granite.
There you go, so that-
So it's not dirt, and I'm not saying it's dirt, it's decomposed granite.
They knew what you were talking about, so we use a lot of acronyms.
So a direction to staff to bring back in it?
Yeah, please, uh, t- tell us what it will take to get some vegetation there. Not only in the D G areas within the park, but when you drive on Avenue S, I mean, it's just more D G. You know, you have the trees and a couple of trees that are mature enough, they take time to grow. Uh, but I think that we need to look at, uh, adding a little bit of, uh, landscaping along Avenue S and provide a, a place for families that wanna have a, you know, just a little picnic or something. Because it really got me thinking, when I, I saw those two families, uh, uh, at the grass area. It's great, people are starting to use the, the field, soccer teams are using it, they're practicing. It is, it was just something that I realized that it's just not fair. The ones that ended up leaving were the families with little kids. I, I guarantee you, they didn't go put a blanket on the, on the, on the D G. They just had to go, either they went to the, um, playground or they just left. Um, if we can consider that.
You have a commitment from me that within sixty days, we're gonna have a comprehensive, I, plan on all of Yellen.
Okay.
And, and an update for you. I, I concur.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Anybody else with new items?
No, I just wanna thank staff for, uh, being here tonight for this special meeting. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Thank them for being here on Tuesday night, also.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I know that the, uh, agenda says that we're supposed to adjourn to May eighteenth, but should we not adjourn to May tenth instead for the combined council meeting? When, when should we adjourn to, sir, officially?
We can adjourn to May tenth. Let's just be certain at the end of that meeting that we adjourn our meeting to May eighteenth.
Okay, sounds good. So we will adjourn this meeting to, until May tenth at five thirty. Is that correct?
That's right.
That's it, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.